Hello, everybody. My name is Betty Lynn White and I'm co-president of the League of Women Voters of Westport with Becky Ruthven, who is sitting at that table. Yes, very good, Becky. Welcome tonight. We're so glad that you're all here and thanks to the town, the Board of Education, and the library for supporting us in this series entitled Know Your Town, which is vitally important. We've already had a successful program on the RTM and the Board of Finance and will continue with the Planning and Zoning Committee early next year. We have several others under consideration and if for some reason you think that there's something we should talk about, that the town should know, that the members of the town should know, please talk to Becky and we can get that under consideration and see what we can do about it. The League of Women Voters has been around since 1920. It came out of the suffered debt movement. It's a nonpartisan organization dedicated to American democracy by supporting easy, free, and fair elections. Voting is the most important thing that we do as a society for the virtue of our democracy. And it depends on informed voters, and we're here today to do that. As a nation, our percentage of voting by registered voters is not very impressive, and it becomes even less impressive when it's a local election. And I say that because Westport is no exception. Yet our local elections are enormously important. They influence our taxes, where we can build up on our property, the value of our property, traffic controls, library support, supporting actions, and of course, the education of our children. It is the place where your vote may have the most immediate and significant import. I urge you to vote. You always hear League of Women Voters are always saying, "Vote." We have little signs on our properties that say, "Vote." A healthy democracy requires the participation of informed voters. Do you know that your town does not permit super majorities on its boards? Do you know who has the authority over which issue is of interest to you? If not, you're not alone. We work here to address these kinds of issues. It is why we support debates, which we have scheduled for October 11th and 12th this year, seminars, lectures, discussions, and of course, some of those might even include some food and other things, which would be nice. Tonight, we address the role of the Board of Education, which affects all our citizens, whether we have children in the school system or because of the effect of a good school system, and we are first, according to Nish, has on our property values. This program is moderated by Joan Gilman, who is, whose expertise, concern, and energy at fulfilling the educational needs of our public is unmatched. Thank you, Joan, for your dedication. She has done all of these as the moderator. And before I rightfully hand over the microphone to Joan, actually, she already has the microphone. We weren't supposed to do that. Hide it for a minute. I have to do a short commercial interruption. We welcome all people at the League of Women Voters, all, whether you have a political affiliation or you don't, whether you're a female or you're not. Even though it says League of Women Voters, if you are not female, you can become a member of the League of Voters. And all people who are interested in working for democracy, we urge you to find out more information about the League of Women Voters of Westport at the table in the back where Becky is. There she is, and we hope you will join. Any questions that you have, please go to our website, write in, email us, and we will try and get back to you. And now, back to our regular scheduled programming. Here you go, Joan, it's all yours.
Thank you, Betty Lynn, and welcome, everybody. Thank you for coming. We're going to have a lively discussion about how our Board of Ed works this evening. But before we get started with introductions, we are going to take questions at the end of the program, but we're asking everyone to write the questions down. And Nancy is standing there with pens and index cards, so if you think you would like to submit some questions, please put your hand up and she will hand them out to you. And then she'll collect them before the end of the program. So we're going to kick off with each of the members of the Board of Education that are joining us this evening. Thank you, Lee, Neil, and Dory. They're each going to introduce themselves, and then we're going to jump into background on the Board of Ed and other critical topics. I'm going to be asking questions between each of the sections, and then we'll conclude with questions from the audience. So with that, Lee, welcome. Thank you, and I turn the mic over to you.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Lee Goldstein. I chair the Westport Board of Education. I was elected in 2019, and in 2021, I became the chair. Our board, and I think all the boards in town, the boards themselves elect the officers. As of this past Sunday night, I'm officially an empty nester. Both my kids went off to college. And since we've been here, they went through Westport Public Schools and graduated from Staples. I want to say on behalf of my colleagues and the whole board, it is really an honor and a privilege to serve on the Board of Ed and any town body. And tonight, we're going to talk about what we do and how we do it. If there's one take-home message, it's get involved. I came to this through the PTA. Everyone has a different path, but Westport as a town really encourages civic engagement. And with that, I want to thank the League and the library for hosting us here tonight.
Good evening. I'm Neil Phillips, and first, I wanted to thank the League of Women Voters for putting on this forum. These are always very important to the community, and I understand that the Board of Finance put one on and the RTM put one on that were received quite well. So I'm on the Board of Ed, not as an elected official. I actually came to the board in 2018 to fill a vacancy and served the term from 2018 to 2019. And then I came back to the board to fill another vacancy, because I'm a C filler. And this time around, I am going to run again. I have been on the RTM for five years preceding my time on the Board of Ed and served as Chair of the Education Committee. So I've been quite involved with the schools for the past 10 years. I have two twin boys that are in their junior year at Staples, and I have been a 30-plus-year resident of Westport, and that's a little bit about me.
Hi, good evening, and thank you to the League of Women Voters and to the library. I'm Dory Horton, and I've been on the board since 2021. I came to the board through many years on the PTA, and I've lived in town since 2007. I have three boys. One just graduated from Staples High School, so I'm a one-third empty nester. And I have another son who's a junior at Staples High School and a son who just started sixth grade at Bedford. And glad to be here and to share a little bit about the board.
Thank you very much. I think, Neil, you are taking the first part of the program.
I, yeah, thank you. So I do the kind of introductory, like first day back to school, so it's kind of maybe a little boring, but I'm going to try to spice it up a little bit and not take too much time. So I don't know what slides we are on, but I'm going to...
Carrie will turn the slide. Next page, Carrie.
So the one that says, "School Boards Connect the Will of the Community."
Next.
Is that it?
Wow. That's a lot.
No, that's fine. So I am not going to read all of this to you. This is a lot of interesting facts. I will point out two important dates on this list. 1865, when the State Board of Education in Connecticut was established. And then about 45 years later, in 1918-19, the Connecticut Revisions Act confirmed the right of each town to control and manage its schools. The local school board is a uniquely American institution, and serving on a Board of Education is a critical part of the town government. Nationally, there are about 97,000 individuals who serve on boards of education. In Connecticut, there are about 1,400 citizens, just like ourselves, who serve on boards. And our school districts in Connecticut serve roughly about 500,000 children and employ more than 60,000 people. Here in Connecticut, we have about 5,200 students that we serve and just about 1,000 employees, so it's quite a large operation. And here's an interesting fact that I don't think either one of you know, that unlike school board members in many other states, Connecticut school board members receive no compensation for their service. I was actually surprised to know that this could be a paid gig. But we do receive the satisfaction that comes from providing an indispensable public service. And you may hear people say it's a thankless job. I don't see it as a thankless job. It actually truly is an honor, as Lee said, to serve on the board, and we do get a lot of satisfaction out of the successes we see from our time on the board. And we can go to the next slide, please. So where do we fit into the structure of town government? We are one of many boards, as you can see. We are a seven-member board with four-year terms. There are two other boards that have seven members, Board of Finance, Planning and Zoning. Our representative town meeting is our legislative local government that has about 36 members. There's a Board of Selectmen, and as you can see, the term's up there. The Board of Education meets quite often, and if you check out the calendar online, we meet on average about twice a month. And then once budget season hits in January, our meetings amp up a little bit, and we have about six meetings in January. And then until the budget is approved in May, we are going to various RTM committee meetings and Board of Finance meetings. So it's a pretty extensive service on the board. We do have a recess in the summer, so we are usually not meeting in July and August. When we did go through the closure of the middle school about four or five years ago, we were meeting nonstop that year, so we did have meetings through July, August, and into the school year. We can go to the next slide, please. I think there is one that's, the Board of Ed is a corporate body. I don't know if that's on there, but...
It should be next.
Okay. Okay, there we are. So much like, the Board of Ed is a corporate body, much like a Board of Directors for a company, a large company. We have one employee, that's the superintendent, who acts as the CEO of our organization. And the school boards derive their power and authority from local statutes. A school board acts as an agent of the state government with all of the authority and limitations imposed by the General Assembly and the state constitution. As an individual board member, we have no legal power. We can only exercise our powers collaboratively or collectively as a board through board action. The board's role is that of planner and policymaker, whereas the superintendent is implementing the plan and policy and administering the schools. The superintendent is subject to an annual review by the board, and I'm happy to report that this past spring, we renewed our superintendent's contract for another three years. So that's a sign that we're in a good place with the superintendent we have representing the schools. So how is a Board of Ed member elected?
Go back one.
Sorry, I went out of order. I may have added a... All right. Well, first, the candidate must be a resident of Westport and a registered voter. Any candidate would need to obtain the nomination and endorsement, excuse me, of one or more of the political parties. There shall be no more than four members of the same party on any board, so we usually have a four-three makeup on the board. Once a candidate is nominated or endorsed, then they begin their campaigning for the next two months up until Election Day. Four members, so the way it works is four members are usually elected in one election cycle, and then three members are elected in the next election cycle. And the term commences on the first Tuesday after the third Monday in November. We do have an organizational meeting as a board in December to elect our own leadership, so he is a chair, I'm a secretary, Liz Hire is vice chair. And as I mentioned before, I filled a vacancy. So many board members before me, my predecessors, have come to the board through a vacancy, where there's an open seat and you go to your, the party, your local party to seek their endorsement. The board then has to approve that member, and then you complete the remaining years of that term. So I'm completing the term from Yan Su Chow, who is my predecessor, and her term expires this November. And I think the next slide just shows you the current board members now and their term of service. And I think that completes the background.
I do have some questions to follow up, and I'm going to direct the questions at all three of you. So thank you, Neil, for taking the few slides, the opening slides. You mentioned early, we have local control, and there's a long tradition of it, but you do operate under some state and federal laws. I think it would be helpful for the audience to understand, how do you stay current? How do people follow how those laws change? And do you have any role in providing input if the state or the federal government are looking at making changes?
Do I speak to Cabe?
Well, we heard from the super.
Yeah, so we have, I'd say first and foremost, we have our attorney. They're the large, Shipman and Goodwin, and they represent many, many districts in Connecticut. And every year, I was going to talk about this a little bit in policy, the state legislature makes policies for us. Our law firm consolidates that and lets us know what new policies we're obligated to enforce. One coming up soon is they changed the kindergarten cutoff day. So, you know, you get handed something like that and you need to respond. Cabe, which is the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, that's our professional organization, they also put that together for us. In terms of input into laws, I mean, no, not really. We do what we're obligated, under law, to do.
And we also, I was going to talk a little bit about this in the advocacy section, but for example, Lee and I went to a Cabe conference this summer, and we learned a little bit about some of the policies. There were other board members there, other superintendents. So it was an interesting professional development piece that sometimes we do as a board.
Wonderful, thank you. Picking up on one other topic is clearly, when you're elected and you're new to the role or you're appointed, you're coming up a very steep learning curve. For anyone who might be interested in running someday, what resources were available to you? Any tips on how you came up to speed and what the audience might benefit from running?
I mean, I was pretty involved with the PTA, so I attended many board meetings prior to joining the board, so I had an understanding of the time and commitment and a lot of the issues concerning the schools. But one thing that the board had set up prior to arriving, Lee had set up with, I think, Liz and Yan Su, which was a whole session to onboard new board members, and it was really helpful. We met with the lawyer, we talked about board norms, we talked about the way the board operates, executive sessions, lots of good information to help us onboard.
We tried to do that. I served on a Board of Education in New York State. In New York, board members are by law mandated to attend board onboarding. That's with the district attorney, the district special education attorney. You have to take a class in state finances. There's Connecticut's, again, we have so much local autonomy, it's really up to the district.
I think...
We have, I think we also have an informal system of mentorship. We're, to all of us mentor, and I reach out to former board members when I have a question still.
I think in reading some of the newer public acts this year, I think they are requiring it now that the boards provide a formal training, because we are agents of the state, we are subject to state statute, so it's not just a matter of, you know, running with a feeling that you have or, you know, what you think you can do. There are very stringent rules and statutes that we have to follow. And before I got, when I got on the board in 2018, it was really a trial by fire, because I had one meeting and then we went right into a crisis, and there was really no, you know, they give you a packet of information, which is really helpful, and I use it, you know, to this day. I looked at some of it today when I was, you know, looking at what we were going to talk about, and it's very helpful, but you do have to read it. There is a lot of homework to step up to a board. I didn't know that, I didn't understand that when I got involved. I thought I would just not wing it, but just like learn as I go. But I think that public act, and I don't know the number offhand, is going to be helpful.
Wonderful.
And it's surprisingly interesting, you know, when I joined the board, I was really, it's a lot of interesting information, so it's intellectually stimulating and it's, as Neil was saying earlier, it's super rewarding.
Thank you. I think we're going to dig into a lot more material, so let's turn to the next section.
So I'm going to start this one, the Board of Ed responsibilities. Go to the next slide. We basically have four legal responsibilities: budget, policy, advocacy, and hiring and evaluating the superintendent. The overarching responsibility is that of governance, and Neil talked about this. We are, Connecticut has a long history of local autonomy for boards of education, but we are agents of the state, and we are authorized by and obligated to the state legislature, the judiciary, the State Department of Education, and the State Board of Education. We carry out, yeah, we carry out the regulations and laws that were handed. What I want to talk about is, we're a deliberative body, and by that, I mean, we do our work in public. That's the law. We talk about, we call it FOIA, Freedom of Information Act, and that's not some sort of nicety or nuisance. It's actually the mechanism by which we're obligated to operate. So sometimes we hear, "Oh, you're not so efficient," or "Your meetings go on and on." That's actually the work we're doing. When we come to the table and we're talking about an issue, we're thinking it through, we're talking to each other, we're hearing from the community, that's the work. And there's another thing I've been hearing in town lately about transparency, and this is how we operate in a transparent way, and it's important to all of us to uphold that. So our agendas are online, all the backup material is online, the memo from the superintendent to the board is always posted, our meetings are streamed and televised. If you come to one of our meetings, all the materials are printed in paper in the front. So we really try to uphold these laws to be transparent and open in everything we do. The other thing that's the highlight on this slide that Neil talked about is governance means, it's the board's responsibility is not to run the schools, but to ensure that the schools are well-run. And I think this leads to the biggest misunderstanding between the community and the board, because people will call us and want us to fix something or deal with it. That's not what our job is. Our job is to evaluate, to, Dory will talk more about how the board interacts with the superintendent when there are problems, but we are not operators, we are governors. It's also, Dory talked about our being at this Cabe conference, and it was interesting, we went to a couple of different sessions, and when we came back together, this isn't to criticize other boards, but you hear other boards that are not functioning so well, and we were both like, wow, they are really in the weeds of that district. We would not be doing that.
That was a pat on the back for Westport.
Yeah, that was a pat on the back. Next slide, please. So another obligation of the board is to adopt and then advocate for the budget for the schools. Our public schools are funded primarily, as most of you will know, through local property taxes. According to need, we receive some federal and state aid. I have on my notes here a spoiler alert, we don't get much. For 2324, we'll get about $500,000 from the state. Our 2324 operating budget is $136 million. That's the operating part. There's a few other operating, a few other like bond service budgets and stuff, but that's the operating part. Eighty percent of that is salaries and benefits. We're a human services organization, and that's where most of our money goes. The school budget is 63% of the town of Westport's budget. Next slide. And there's a process for the budgets. As Neil alluded to, it goes on and on. First, the superintendent proposes a budget, and then the board goes through that budget line by line, area by area. And that is a place where we, the board, with the administration and the superintendent, do make choices. So during COVID, the federal government gave school districts grants. One thing we used some of our money for was to pay for math interventionists. The superintendent, when he was preparing his budget, you know, was always hearing, "Be prudent, don't spend so much." So he said, "All right, that grant is over, we won't continue with the math interventionists." The board said, "No, that's an expense we really want to bear, add that back in." On the other hand, he had something, a maintenance position that the board did not support, so he said, "Cut that one out." So after we do this, we vote on the budget. It goes, for us, it goes to the Board of Finance, they approve it. It goes, in a good world, it goes to the RTM, RTM committees, they approve it. There's a lot of ample public deliberation on each board, among the boards, among the public and these boards. The funding bodies, the RTM and the Board of Finance, they approve or don't approve the total amount. They have no line item discretion. So if we go to the Board of Finance with $136 million and they say, "We're only approving 135," we have to cut the million, but they have no say over where. And then there's also a process, if there are cuts, there are restitution process, inflection points along the way. We can repetition the Board of Finance. If they continue to make cuts we don't agree with, the Board of Fin, the RTM can restore those cuts. This past year, every board, Board of Finance, RTM, all the committees unanimously approved our full budget, so it's a good year. Policy, please. Okay. So this speaks to itself. The board has a role in writing, evaluating, monitoring policy. And that is the mechanism for us to monitor what we're really here to do, which is increase student achievement. However broadly or narrowly defined, that's our job, to ensure that students are provided a quality public education. The policies are the laws of the district. Then our professional educators, our superintendent and his designee, is what we call it in policy, write regulations that operationalize those policies. And that is how the board delegates responsibility and authority to the superintendent and faculty. So our board has a policy subcommittee. Our subcommittees have no voting power, we just kind of do the legwork, so our policy committee will either take up these new mandated state policies. For example, we have a meeting tomorrow, one of the new policies is about how nurses can administer medication in school. Our policy committee has vetted that, we've read it, we've now presenting it to the board. It's only the board as a whole that can adopt and vote for that policy. Conversely, we've had policies where our board is interested in doing something a little differently, legal but different. So a few years ago, we took up a student survey policy. It increased student privacy within Westport. This year, we're going to, in policy, look at equity between boys and girls' sports. That's something that's come to us as a concern of the community and a concern of board members, so our policy committee will be looking at that. Our policy meetings, like everything else we do, are open to the public, they're noticed, our agendas are online. We, also online will be the changes to any policy that we recommend, and then what the board is voting on. And that's it. I think I'm turning it over to Dory.
Hi, so I'm on to advocacy, so... Hi. So I'm onto advocacy. So, all right. So the board represents the citizens of Westport and through that, the families and their children. Our goal as a board and through advocacy is to advocate for public education and the merits and the values. So that's really important. Advocacy can take the role of providing constructive feedback to the superintendent and the administration in the meetings. And I was going to talk a little bit as well about how we work together as a full board and deliberate in our meetings twice a month. But we also have the smaller meetings. So Lee was talking about the policy committee. And then there's also the finance and facilities committee, as well as teaching and learning. And we use those times, and there's different members of the board on each committee. And I chair teaching and learning, for example. You're also on teaching and learning and you're on policy. And you're just on policy now? Okay. Learn something new every day. So we, we also decide who goes on the, the different committees. And we vote on that in December every year at the same time that we vote the chair, the vice chair, and the secretary. So again, all of those meetings, the agendas are posted online. We love it when people from the public come and really, that's where we get more into the weeds of some of the specifics. And it's a little more casual where you can come and have a conversation back and forth with some board members. And then whatever we do in the committee work is usually a precursor to what's brought into the general board and then voted on, sometimes bounced back to the committee if there's more information to learn or more deliberation that needs to be had. And we also, what I was saying, we do professional development. We go to sometimes, what we're saying, conferences. We sometimes lean on one another with questions or different members of the community, actually, like Lee was saying. So that's, that's advocacy. And we can move on to the board super relationship. So this one's, this one is also sometimes where people get confused about what our role is. So we, you know, the superintendent is an employee of the district. And he is the one employee who reports to the board. So we really oversee, the superintendent and the Board of Ed is responsible for hiring a superintendent. And I wasn't on the board when our current super was hired, but I know they did a great job finding him and trying to find a super who aligns with the district's missions and visions and goals and values. Sorry, I actually need my glasses now. And then, so the, so really, it's just the, the superintendent is the CEO of the school system. He reports to the board and the board is accountable to the constituents, which are all, which, who are all of you, the voters, not just people with kids in the schools, but it's all your taxpayers. So we're, we're, you know, we're accountable to the constituents in town. So how we work together with the superintendent, he, we're not responsible for the day-to-day operations of the schools. The superintendent obviously is. He puts into place all the things you've heard about, the policy, the mission. He runs the staff, the administration. They, they report to him. And one of the things we do, that's a big thing, is every five years, we develop a new strategic plan that the superintendent, along with the superintendent, that he implements with members of the faculty and administration. And we get there. I mean, we figure out the district's mission and values and goals by listening. And I'm sure some of you have seen this, where in the past, the board has done things like FAQs. If there's something major happening in the district, I know there was like an FAQ when we had Collytown Middle being renovated. We have community conversations where anybody's welcome to show up. I think we're doing that twice this year, community conversations. And as a board member, those are really key. And it's, it's really interesting to hear feedback from the community. Sometimes I feel like people in the community don't realize how accessible we are. You can email us, call us, and I think we're all, as a group, pretty responsive. So that's one of our responsibilities. And then we meet with different groups, a lot with the PTA, because they're, you know, on the ground. They're in the schools. They hear a lot of feedback from the parents. So we always try to meet with the PTA whenever we can. We check in on progress with the superintendent. And, you know, he gives us those updates in the meetings and we question, or we agree, or we debate. So we govern, we share communication, we establish policies, we identify barriers to education. I think it might be on the next slide. Yeah. And then, like, some of those barriers to education would be mental, physical, emotional, engagement. Those are just examples of barriers. And then, like I said before, the superintendent implements those. He finds a way to address the barriers through potentially a strategic plan. He keeps us informed. So if something's happening during the day, that could be of concern. He'll shoot off emails to the board. And that's, that's pretty much it.
It's a lot to absorb. And I want to leave plenty of time for the audience. So I'll ask one follow-up question and we'll move on to the next section. But as you think about the division of responsibilities, if you were to share an example of, and you're very accessible and people should email you and call you, there are certain topics where they may be better served reaching the superintendent first versus the board. And do you have any advice for the audience as to how to think about that first point of contact if, if someone in the community wants to be most effective in their reach out to the educational system?
We always say, I mean, for most families, reach out to your child's teacher. That's the first point of contact. There's, on the website, I saw there is a chain of communication. It starts with the teacher. It might go to the building principal, depending on what the issue is. Some issues, special ed, if, if there are special education issues, you actually wouldn't reach out to the board or the superintendent. That is, those have a different pathway to resolution. You would start with your team and then the, the assistant superintendent of people personnel services. And then there's a, a legal chain for that. But, you know, I, I think what Dory said is, we can often listen, but we will always refer you to, almost always, we will almost always refer you back to someone in the district, whether it's the director of transportation, the athletic director, the, the assistant superintendent of curriculum. It, it's almost never us to solve something.
Any additional thoughts?
I was just going to say the same thing, that still send the emails to us. Because oftentimes, if you don't know where to go, we will be able to direct you to the right department or the right individual of who you would speak to. So we, we do help in that manner.
And there are times when something's happening in the district where we get more emails than normal. And then that's our cue to, to go to the superintendent and say, you know, we're hearing a lot of feedback that in fifth grade, this is happening. Can you look into that? But we would never go directly to a teacher or an administrator. That would be us stepping out of line. We would just only go to the superintendent.
And people, we don't close the schools. It's not our decision. Sometimes, I had this when I was on the RTM, you know, people decided they didn't like something in Campo Beach. And they would say to me, well, you're on the RTM. You should know. And it's, there's a really, you know, specific area of authority we have. So, you know, again, reach out and, you know, we can help educate in that way.
Wonderful. Okay. The last section before how you can participate is current work. And Lee and Dory, you're splitting this. I don't know.
Well, I didn't think, go to the current, go to the next slide. What I did hear is I just, on our meeting tomorrow, we're looking at a draft calendar of agenda items. So I just went through September and October. It's a lot. This is what will be on our agenda for the next two months. I, I thought, I imagined more of a, I thought people in the audience now would, would ask about that? Or maybe you just want to ask about any of those things from a process perspective.
So I have a few questions I can ask now, and then the audience will get a chance in a few minutes. But it is a long list for the next, next few months. If you were to elaborate on one of these projects in terms of input from the community, if people are, you know, are likely to be concerned or have some ideas, what advice would you give them in terms of being effective at influencing the discussion?
No, because redistricting is not yet up there because we'll talk about that tomorrow. We're not, that, that will be on here. It just isn't scheduled yet.
You can speak to it if you want. I was saying, if you picked just one topic there and you were, based on your experience on the board, if someone in the community would like to share their ideas or concerns about the topic, what are the most effective ways for them to do that?
I mean, I would say speaking at board meetings, either when it's an agenda item or there is always time at the beginning of every board meeting to speak about non-agenda items. So that's a good time to share concerns. The other thing, like, take security, for example. We've been getting some emails about school security, and that's really helpful. Some, you know, it's always helpful, especially if people, if they're choosing to write in, to not just criticize or say what's great about something, but, I mean, usually people, when they're writing in, or have some criticism, but to say something constructive about how we could solve the problem and not just complain about the problem. With something like school security, I mean, as a board member, I'm, I'm very hesitant to talk about what we're planning to do, because, I mean, publicly, you don't always want to say what's happening in the schools per security. But we read all the emails and we take all the suggestions. They're appreciated and it's helpful.
Yeah. And the, these are the areas that align with vision, long-term planning, and strategy. So Long Loss Elementary School, you know, you may be reading about this lately. We, as the board, we fill out education specifications, which we did. And that was for, we have requested a new Long Loss Elementary School that includes our preschool stepping stones. And, and our, and our ed specs, they're called, include the playground and the parking lot. That's what we've asked for. That by statute now goes to a building committee that was appointed by our first select woman. They're, right now, they've been meeting. And in a few weeks, they will present some options. When those recommendations get discussed, it will go to every board and committee and commission in Westport, except back to the Board of Ed. So it is helpful when the public understands what we do and don't control. So that's one. We're getting an update tomorrow on the building committee. I imagine there will be a lot of public comment about stuff we don't really have a lot to do with, but we're there to receive it. But for something like the strategic plan update, at every inflection point, that's where we really do appreciate public feedback through emails, calls, coming to public meetings, through our community conversations. That's how we learn what the public's interested in. A lot of times, we, we make assumptions about what we think people are interested in. And usually, it turns out people are way more interested in whether their bus has come or whether their kid has a friend at lunch. So we, we only know when we hear from people.
Wonderful. Let's quickly move on to the final section, which you've covered. Well, you've covered some of these topics, but if she turns the page, get involved.
This is how you can participate?
If you go, how do you?
This is back to Neil.
If you go, skip that one. I think the other one is more detailed, just to reinforce communication. So, but this also speaks to how do you get involved, not just in getting feedback, but possibly running. So I would just ask one question before I ask for questions from the audience. Are there good ways to get involved and in what organizations might prepare you better? And Dory, you had been involved in the PTA, so.
And Lee, too.
And Lee. So just some thoughts as to advice you might give the audience if they consider ever running for the Board of Ed, or they'd like to get involved in other ways.
I, I've served on the nominating committee for the Democratic Town Committee. And in that, and I was on a RTM member at the time. And when people saw boards, they just jumped right to the board. You know, they would say, I want to be on the Board of Finance, or I want to be on the Board of Ed. And we have no shortage of really qualified people in this town. So that's really a plus. So many people come forward and they have backgrounds and skill sets that are hugely beneficial to the boards they serve in. But what I found, and it worked for me, I didn't intend it to be, because I did not intend to be a Board of Ed member. I was on the RTM and I just thought that was going to be my, my, my thing, my community service. But the RTM is really a great place to start, because you get a, you get a taste of everything. And I see some of RTM members here who know and can speak to that. You know, I got involved in the education committee because that appealed to me. There's the finance committee. There's the library committee. There's the Health and Human Services Committee. There's environment. So there's so much to do. And it's easier to run for the RTM. It's for, there's nine districts in Westport, four members from each district. They run every, their terms are two years, and it's odd-year elections for the RTM. But I found that was a great stepping. So a lot of people do come from the PTA and then they naturally move to the board. But I think the RTM is a missed opportunity for a lot of people to get their feet wet, learn how the town runs. I had no idea how Town Hall worked until I got onto the RTM and I served on planning and zoning. And that was, you know, hugely eye-opening to me. So I think that's something that people should give some thought to if they're looking to move on to a board.
Thank you.
Any further thoughts? I mean, there's a lot of committees in town. I mean, there's the Arts Advisory Committee. There's all sorts of committees you can also join to get to know people before also trying to get on a board. PTA, like you were saying, just coming to the meetings of the various committees and boards to learn about what's happening. And the RTM, yeah, we, we all sort of came to the board in a different way, but we were involved within the town somehow.
Thank you. So I will look to, is it Betty Lynn or Nancy? Nancy has the questions. Thank you.
Okay. Let me do that. At the very, at the very end, I'll do that. Oh, well, I'll take the first one. What is an inflection point?
An inflection point is a pause in the process where there's deliberation and then a decision. So an inflection point in the Long Loss process, the next inflection point, I believe, will be when the board, when the building committee makes its recommendation. I've heard people, it's a huge project. So there will be a lot of public and community discussion about it. That, that will happen before there's any decisions.
Okay. There is a question that also goes to Betty Lynn's point. Will there be a debate among the BOE candidates where they can be questioned on specific issues? The League of Women Voters sponsors debates. They are October 11th and 12th. And the Board of Ed debate is the 12th. The questions, though, for.
Is there a meeting that night?
The 12th, the questions for that session, though, are generated by input to the League. So those questions need to be submitted in advance. Do you like working with the RTM and the Police Department?
Well, I'll answer, I'll go, I'll just say that, yes. It's the people I know and it's the, you know, I've come to really have a good collaborative working relationship. So I took that as kind of a benefit, joining the board. So I took that as kind of a benefit, joining the Board, that I had that awareness. So yes, the answer is yes.
I'd say yes, too. I mean, I think the Board and the Administration has a great relationship with the Westport Police Department. They're so supportive. And, yeah, I like, I like all, I mean, anybody that's willing to serve in town government or to give their time, I really respect. And there's so many great RTM members. It's always fun meeting new people or hearing their comments. It's great.
Well, I have, I, yes, however. I also appreciate, I want to say, working with the RTM, the Board of Fin, or the Police, because I think we make each other's work better. I think it's better when people question us, and we need to either defend our work or consider whether we're making a mistake. We have that relationship with a lot of committees and groups in town. And I appreciate being challenged and all of us making our work better because of it.
Okay, the next question, there are a few on the same topic. Is it the BOE's role to establish policy on artificial intelligence? And then there is another question that says, I heard from my son in Staples that ChatGPT was blocked at school. Can you share the reasoning behind, and what is the policy?
So we don't yet have a policy on that. I know that the high school has a team of faculty working on it. We'll just keep talking about this. Dory and I were at this conference this summer, and they were talking about it. Things are changing so fast. And even teachers, how teachers are responding to it, from wanting to block it to wanting to use it as an instructional aid. I would like to see students working with our faculty on that panel. But that, we need to take that up this year, for sure. Kevin Christie chairs our Policy Committee.
Email him.
Email him.
Kevin. There is a follow-up question on who establishes policy for mental health or safety? That's also the Policy Committee?
Yeah, a lot comes from the state there. And often, when we get policy from the state, here's another little pat on the back. We're already doing it or exceeding it. But sometimes, I mean, I've been on the Board four years, and I've taken up the same policy three times sometimes because the laws change.
We have a question about becoming a candidate. How can an unaffiliated candidate win a seat on the Board of Ed?
Maybe Dick Lowenstein was helping me with this the other day. There, if you go to the town website, basically, an unaffiliated candidate must petition the town clerk 90 days before the election. So this year, that was mid-August. It's not so easy.
Okay. You had talked about one of the agenda items being a review of world languages. One of the questions asks more broadly, what is the role of the Board as it relates to academic curriculum?
Maybe Dory will start? So we, on the Teaching and Learning Committee, will, we'll talk about, I mean, we don't control the curriculum. You know, that's really up to the teachers and the Administration. We can question the curriculum sometimes, but we'll bring it up in Teaching and Learning, mostly how it relates to achievement standards when we work in Teaching and Learning, making sure that parents in the district have access to what the kids are learning. And, for instance, in Staples High School, they did a great job after COVID, revamping the different curriculums or the major topics that each class at Staples covers. So that information is out there on the website, and it's up for parent, it's up to parents or students or caregivers to look that information up. And if they have questions about it, email the teacher or the superintendent. If there's a lot of questions, it might come to the Board. We don't really.
We do have a policy on curriculum review that we just, but it's complicated. There is, it's state law mandates that the Boards of Ed approve textbooks. Okay, what's a textbook? There's no definition. So, and now, with so much online, few, students and teachers use fewer and fewer textbooks. There are areas where our curriculum, our Policy Committee and the Board came to an agreement, even if it's not legally mandated for the Board to approve a certain curriculum, there are some things that the community and the Board are so interested in that we gave ourselves some wiggle room there. So, for example, this is so fraught all the time, grade weighting at the high school. Should honors and AP classes be weighted? So an A in an A-level class is a four, and an honors class, it's a 4.2, or whatever it is. If you start to mess around with that, and this happened a few years ago, before we were even on the Board, people go crazy. So that would, that would be an area that the Board would just say, we want to, we're not going to vote, but we want to dig in there. We want some more insight, and we want to interrogate that.
Yeah, that's a good example.
And some of the, some of the work gets, a lot of the heavy lifting does occur at those meetings. And when we serve on Teaching and Learning, we'll push back, we'll ask for more information before it actually comes to the Board. So when it comes to the Board, it may seem as if it got short shrift, but it didn't. It's kind of like how the RTM operates. A lot of their work happens in committee. And then by the time it comes to a vote on the floor, you're hearing about it. And sometimes people will say, this is the first I'm hearing about it. But they've spent maybe weeks, months, talking about an issue. And so it happens similarly on the Board of Ed as well.
And if anyone has ideas for defining a textbook, please let us know. It's stumped us.
So we are, we are actually out of time. And there are two other questions that I think are worth getting to. So I would just see if we can answer these quickly. And one is, we've talked a lot about governance, but who sets the agenda? And the amount of time devoted to specific issues? You spoke to, is it too much time or too little time? And I think the audience would like to know what that process is.
That is one of the few, according to our bylaws, the Chair and the Superintendent set the agenda.
But, I mean, I think as a Board, like, if I have something I feel that's important to be on the agenda, I'll tell Lee that, you know, I've been hearing a lot about this, or there's a few of us that think this should be on the agenda. And sometimes it gets put on the agenda, sometimes not. It just depends also what else is happening. But often, we'll come back to it.
Great. And then transportation is still an issue. Who's in charge of transportation? And who is reviewing the decision to park buses at the school? So this, again, to process. Who's in charge?
Well, that's a great example of how a lot of different Boards work together, or a lot of different people in town. You could probably speak to that.
Are you talking about the parking at the schools? The parking at the schools is allowed right now, temporarily through October 31. It enabled us to, after 20 years of working with ZADCO, contract a new bus company. And we need to have that renewed by the planning and zoning. We're also now working with the Fire Chief and the Fire Marshal about some issues there. In terms of the, was that the transportation question? Yeah.
And the superintendent does a good job of reaching out to the parent community with updates, especially when there are things that are timely that are happening, that are of concern. And we're certainly hearing about transportation issues, some of which we know are part of the natural hiccups when you start a school year. But he does take it to heart. And I think what we're, what we get out of him as opposed to prior superintendents is a lot more transparency about what the problem is, what's being done to correct it. And if I could add one more thing on people that want to stay involved in what we do, on the town website, if you go to westportct.gov, I don't know if that's what it is, you can actually sign up. It doesn't have to just be for our Board. But you can sign up to get updates of our agendas, updates on minutes, so that you can find out how a vote, what a vote occurred, and, you know, how it was voted on by all seven members. And that will come automatically to your mailbox. So if you want to stay informed about what we do, please sign up there.
It's a wonderful way to end the session. I really would like to thank Lee, Neil, and Dory for joining us tonight, for the audience for joining us. And thank you very much. Look forward to.
And thank you, Joan.
Looking forward to the next one. Yeah, Becky, they probably can hear you, but Becky's encouraging. If you'd like more information about the League or to sign up, Becky has some brochures at the table. So encourage you to do that. Thank you very much. Please come to the debates.